All right, we're gonna get started. Uh, this is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call over first?
I'm Mr. Gabbard.
Present.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Present.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Here.
Mr. Pressler?
Here.
Mr. York?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith?
I don't see him here.
No?
No, I don't think he's here.
All right. Well, we'll look on then. Next, we have presentations.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I wanna look for motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, I want a second. A second. Mr. Pressler, Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. President, members of the board, over the summer, we hired several certified, classified members, and Mrs. Beckett's here this evening to do a little introduction of our new staff. So, welcome. Mrs. Beckett.
Thank you so much. What an honor to be here tonight and to speak to you all about our new staff. Here, can you just start to think about the fact that you have entrusted us to hire the best, the brightest? You have said to us, "For a new teacher, we want you to make a three million dollar investment on behalf of the Edgewood City Schools." And we've searched long and far and found some wonderful people to share with you. Something that I thought about today, a new teacher, when we hire them right now, they will be in the Edgewood City Schools until the year 2059, impacting this community. And a high school teacher in that time will educate over four thousand students. Never forget the impact that you have on the lives of the children and the, and the community here. So today, we will go by building by building. When I say your name, if you could join us here tonight, please stand up so they can put a face, a face with a name. At Edgewood Early Childhood Center, we have a new secretary, Amanda Pike, new custodian, Sandy Haller. Here's Sue Weaver, preschool teacher. Erica Jones, intervention specialist, and Kayla Kinder, music. At the primary school, we have Kimberly Rotis, paraprofessional. Shelby Schmidt, intervention specialist. At Edgewood Intermediate School, we have Amber Dahlhoff, assistant principal. Tequila Fulham, teacher. Megan Jones, teacher. Megan Howard, intervention specialist, and Dorothy Young, cook's helper. At the middle school, we have Cindy Boland, custodian. Charlene Pennington, paraprofessional. Kyle Hamilton, intervention specialist. At Edgewood High School, we have Lily Hatney, intervention specialist. Anne Wilson, teacher. Abigail Tarburton, teacher. Lieutenant Colonel Scott Van Schoich, retired, he's the ROTC teacher. Brooke Druffner, teacher. And in transportation, coming back to us is Jamie Hester, bus driver. So we are, we are thrilled to have you here with us.
The busy summer, wasn't it?
Busy summer, absolutely.
Welcome.
Welcome. Well, I also wanted to take just a quick minute to let you know that at the beginning of the school year, we handed out sixty-nine service awards to our, our employees at five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, twenty-five, and thirty. So behind you, you'll see the names of our, of our people who we honor. Just something to think about, of those sixty-nine employees, nineteen received their high school diploma from the Edgewood City Schools. Forty have children who currently attend or will attend the Edgewood City Schools. And I always like to think about the people who stay with us are the people running a marathon. They're, they don't take this as a sprint. They stay with us, they run that marathon, and because of that, our families, our community, our children, our staff were, were always impacted and were ever grateful for that service that they give to us. So thank you all, and thank you for coming here.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Beckett?
Thank you.
You know, next up is Kelly Beiser, FFA teacher. And as she's making her way up here, I have to say, Mrs. Beiser, I have a granddaughter here at the high school, and it's probably not, um, fair to say, but she just thinks your class is awesome. So I hear a lot about FFA. Mrs. Beiser, so it's nice to have you here today.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Um, so I am Kelly Beiser. I'm the agricultural education teacher and FFA advisor here at Edgewood High School. Uh, periodically throughout the, the years, our FFA chapter identifies individuals who have provided long-term, uh, support to our program that has made a truly meaningful impact by recognizing, or by nominating those individuals for a, a state FFA honorary degree. Um, we each year give away honorary degrees at our chapter level, but when we identify individuals whose support goes beyond, um, a short period of time and truly makes a difference in the direction of our program, we have nominated them for the honorary state FFA degree. And this past May, at the state FFA convention, one of the board members that attends tonight, Amy Ashcraft, was given the honorary state FFA degree by the Ohio FFA Association. Um, Amy unfortunately, due to work conflicts, couldn't join us in Columbus. And I told her I didn't think that was fair. I wanted her to still get the public recognition that she deserves. And so we settled on a board meeting as an opportunity to share some of the positive things that Amy has done for our program, um, and express our appreciation. So, Michaela is a senior in our program this year. She has attended a lot of the events that Amy has been a part of over the years, and she's going to speak a little bit tonight about Amy's involvement in our program.
Thank you, Michaela.
Amy Ashcraft has been a tremendous supporter of Ag Education, the FFA, and all students who participate in the program at Edgewood High School. Amy is a parent of four past FFA members and asks them to continue to contribute to the success of the program after her children have left. She has poured her time, energy, and support into our members and our program. Amy has volunteered time to coach students in the job interview CDE, spending numerous hours in a one-on-one setting, asking questions and providing feedback on interview skills. Amy has also volunteered the services chap, chaperone for the four-day National FFA Convention Trip on two occasions, as well as the two-day trip to the Ohio State FFA Convention. She has also served as a chaperone for several FFA meetings over the years. Our members value her time as well as the mentorship that she has provided during these experiences. Amy has deposited money for the FFA chapter free sale on multiple occasions. She has come to the school several times each year to count money and complete the required school deposit forms. She has been willing to stay well past the expected amount of time to ensure that all funds are deposited correctly for the chapter. Amy has also been an active member of the local alumni chapter for many years. She has helped with key fundraisers and has offered her home and farm to host a chapter FFA meeting for members. From the FFA banquet to application judging, Amy has done it all when it comes to volunteering on behalf of our chapter. In addition to being a constant source of help and physical support for the chapter, Amy has also played a key role in generating administrative and community support for the program. She shares a positive word about our chapter everywhere she goes and makes it clear to everyone that she believes in what we do. Amy has been a vital source of support to our Ag Ed program for many years. She is a tremendous advocate for agriculture education and is undoubtedly deserving of the honorary state FFA degree.
Yes.
So, tonight, you're presenting with the actual honorary state FFA degree. We need to get a picture, so. Oh, yes. We want a picture. We're the ones over here. Do you wanna get a?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Oh, here, do we need to move here? We got, we got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Beiser.
Thank you. Do I get a chain?
We can make those. And what's a chain?
Well, the, um, state FFA degree, so.
Oh, the chain.
The rest's chain.
Yes, yes.
Well, congratulations, Amy. That's a
Well, thank you.
very honorary thing you're doing there.
Thank you. I believe wholeheartedly in FFA. I tell everybody, I raise my girls up until ninth grade and then Beiser did the rest. She may know the adults that they are today. That's awesome.
Thank you again, Kelly, for bringing that to the board. All right, next, we have public participation. Carleen Yeager. Just remember to please state your name and your address.
Yeah. It's the Carleen Yeager, forty-three fifty-one West Elton Road. I want to thank you for showing the district that we can have a cost savings by combining the multiple grade levels on one bus route. So it appears that you're predicting a two-hundred thousand dollar savings this year by making that. If we had done that the past two years, just rough, six-hundred thousand savings, how would that have improved the budget? That would've been nice. With that, with that saving, we might not have had some of the cuts that we have. We've heard, I've heard complaints about the, the, uh, football team is losing because the levy didn't pass. That's not true. The levy had nothing to do with the team. It had nothing to do with pass busing. But right now, you showed us that saving money by combining the kids on one route is a savings. But at what cost is that coming to the children? You have kids that are on the bus for almost, well, not on the bus, away from the home for almost nine hours a day. Your goal is to have well-educated children that are happy to come to school, energetic to be there, and not dragging that into the day when they get home. So they're so tired, maybe they don't wanna do extra studies. Most of them probably don't do it anyway. But the fact is, if you had kept the school district as it was prior to the change two years ago, there wouldn't have been a need to have kids on the bus this long. There wouldn't have been a need to have this conversation tonight. I know nobody wants to go back and readdress it, but I would really appreciate if you would listen to the community and find out what they want, what they wanna support, what they wanna save money on, and what they're willing to support at the ballot box. Because right now, having these young children on the buses for up to nine hours a day, and right now, I understand, a lot of it is because new bus routes. And right now, most of the kids are delayed by fifteen, twenty minutes minimum of getting home. So please, go to your community, ask the community what you want. I know Mrs. Beiser's trying to get together groups to interact and have this conversation, but it's more than those groups. It's a whole community. It's grandparents, it's parents, it's aunts, uncles, caregivers. We're all dealing with the fallout of what happened two years ago with the change of the district, and now the new bus routes are putting more burden on the youngest kids. And everybody needs to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go to treasure items. Mrs. Bowers.
We have to approve the board meeting.
It's clearly dead before.
So, it's, uh, in for July?
It's on the agenda, and then we have to approve the July meetings.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular board meeting, uh, July seventeenth. So, Mr. Messerschmidt, go ahead. Second, Mr. York. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Now, the next agenda item, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented.
Seven.
Mrs. Ashcraft, I want a second.
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
We're gonna talk about this.
Yes, we can.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Nope. We're gonna talk about this.
Yes, uh, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the financial report, revenues and expenditures. And if I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like the 2024 budget looks like we're gonna exceed that by roughly two million dollars. Is that, is that a correct, am I reading this correct?
Heather, you want Mr. Messerschmidt?
On page one, financial report, August twenty-eighth, the very first page, it shows revenues of, uh, as of July thirty-first, thirty-nine thousand, I'm sorry, thirty-nine million.
Yeah, so I do anticipate that we're gonna go over some. The reason being, this is based off the last five-year forecast, because we only do that semi-annually. We're looking at what was filed in May, and we are expecting an increase in revenue as compared to that forecast. As we know, that's always a work in process. I'm gonna be working next month to start preparing for the November filing and dialing some of these things in.
Okay, so, so we are spending more than we're bringing in, or we're, or we're not?
We, we have been, but we need to be mindful that this is July, and we have contracts and, um,
School, you're working on the school supplies from the school fees. You're doing some of your, um, extra textbook edition. This, this is a heavy spending month. It's gonna, we're gonna then probably, I would hope, take in the recoup
Yeah.
um, over the next few months.
Obviously, I think we're all still a little gun shy over the levy and the, you know, we're spending our budget for several years. And, you know, so I, I look at this, and this caught my attention, and it's, it makes me a little bit uncomfortable, 'cause if we don't reel it in, we're gonna put the next board in a same situation.
I think, Heather, if you ask anyone in the district, they can tell you I have reeled it in. I mean, I question every single thing. We sit in cabinet, and I, I notice somebody put that on our agenda. She is very concerned about spending. I, I do. I go through every P.O. that comes through and watch them accounts.
And people, each department's been allocated funds, so we're not spending past the whole year allocation. So, again, yes, we're spending more because of due supplies for the beginning of the year, but people are, have not been given more money to exceed our budget. So I'm saying, they're within their department spending.
Okay.
Where is eighty percent into the year?
So what I'm hearing is I shouldn't be super concerned?
I think it's a very good question, but don't be concerned yet.
Okay.
One thing, too, um, the only thing we received in July was our foundation payments. We don't have the county in here. Now, we've got both of those, the advance and the other one. You won't see that until the next board meeting, because this only goes through July thirty-one. So we have all this money going out to start up the school here, and only the two foundation payments. That's why we spent so much more than what we brought in for the month of July. But this will be come out next month.
Okay. What about the Sinsai alarm system? There's like multiple charges to Sinsai alarms. What's that, is that like a monthly service charge? 'Cause I see all different.
Do you remember when the alarm kept going off in the last meeting?
Yeah.
We get charged. We get charged after so many calls. So if the sensor, just because of the temperature, set that off, they have to legally come out and check it. And that costs us.
I've never, is that common? They come out multiple times a month? Do we have a lot of problems with that or something?
We do other things within the second.
Yeah, I'm in here.
Can you kind of explain the services that we get from Sinsai?
So, we'll all, for everything from the door buzzers to, uh, security camera, they, they look into that for us. Uh, we had a, uh, door actuator that unlocks the door breakover at the medical office building, central registration that need to replace. So, those are various service calls. Principals want the alarms adjusted or timed, you know, that all, they service our alarms, so each call we make to them comes with a cost. Those are generally service calls.
Is that over in compare, can comparison to past openings or past July months?
Yeah, it, it kind of varies. It goes up and down. Some months, we use them more often. We call them two or three times a month. Sometimes we'll call them for three or four months. Uh, it varies. Oh, okay.
There are options for like preventative maintenance contracts, but they're very expensive. So when you, when you do like an analysis of it, we feel like it's better to pay as we need them. It has been heavier as of late, issues with the doors, alarms, sensors, things like that. But if you don't, if you go a couple of months without using them and you're not paying anything, it's still a cost savings versus doing a preventative maintenance where we pay one amount for the whole year and then they don't charge us for each call. Does that make sense? So, um, we're working through that. Um, they're gonna come out and do a training with us tomorrow, um, so that we can manage more of that. Our principals can manage more of that on their phones, um, remotely, so we don't have to call them as much.
One, one last question for you, Patty, and, you know, we, we've talked a lot about the five-year forecast, and it was, last I remember seeing, it was projected to go red next year. Where we, we, we balanced the budget pretty much for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, but I think we're, we're gonna get back into the same discussion we were just in, it sounds like at some point. Are we, are we thinking that we're gonna have to have discussions around potential cuts, potential levy, potential, where, where are we at in that discussion? Is that something that we're gonna have to start talking about here real soon?
I would say that we need to look at that, but not until that November forecast is filed. Uh, when I went up to Columbus, you might remember me saying this last month, we'll know so much more in October. Like those things that are going through the final phases of legislation in September will impact our foundation and state aid that we see, that we see starting in October. Um, I, I wouldn't be surprised if I don't come to you with a recommendation in November for more cuts. I just don't know until we get that forecast filed what those cuts are gonna be.
I, I, I'll just say this, and now, listen, she's like an attorney. If you ask her that question about financing, she's gonna be the most cautious answer, because that's what you do. I can tell you from what I go in better, where are we now, where are we now? I think we're looking better with the new budget. We're certainly looking better. When we saw the forecast back in March and even in May, we weren't quite sure where we're gonna be, and I thought we were, we were, it was looking as if we were entering this year with a six-hundred thousand dollar deficit, even with all of those cuts. We're out of that now, and we're out for a few years. But the part that we never understand are what's gonna be the inflation cost? What's gonna be the next unfunded mandate? It's those unknowns that make treasurers wanna be very cautious, right? So with all the variables today of spending and prices today, we're looking, we're looking much better, in my opinion. But without those, knowing the unknowns, I don't know where we're gonna be. I think we need to still be cautious in spending. We need to always look at, are we overstaffed in any area? And, and, um, what do we want our educational plan at Edgewood to look like? That's why we're doing this community engagement with strategic planning, just to review where we are and do we still feel that way? And our spending should always mirror our goals. So in my opinion, the deficit spending's pushed out several couple of years, which makes me feel a lot better. But without the unknowns, she's being cautious, because we don't know what's gonna hit us tomorrow.
So it sounds like I'm hearing you right. You're not predicting that we'll be asking for a levy next year?
Where?
Well, we have a re-roll that definitely has to go back.
Outside of that, no, no new money?
We need to have a discussion as a board on that, and I, I think we're looking much better. If we continue to spend it as it is today, if we bring transportation back to three tiers or we start adding more staff, then, yeah, we need to go back on the ballot. So it really depends on what you want.
And if we had to do something?
What the community wants.
But we're, we're not thinking we would need to do that in the spring at this point?
No.
Okay. I've been getting a lot of questions about that, and I, I really just wanted to kind of get some definitive, you know.
I don't think, I don't think we're in a climate for that. My, my personal opinion, you know, people are nervous about what's gonna happen with property tax. What is that gonna cost each individual family? This is not the time to be adding a ballot on them. Um, especially the fact that this new budget did push the deficit out a couple of years.
But, and you were doing a great job with this, and I really appreciate, but I do know you're scrutinizing everything that gets spent. I think you all very much appreciate.
Yeah, once in a while, I tell her legally, we have to do this, Patty. Back off.
I give you old Bailey. Patty, you won't give me any money, so.
I'm like, this is a compliance issue, Patty. Just go let go. You cheat us.
So, when, when will we all know as homeowners, when, what that increase is gonna look like?
So they have released some numbers. Um, we actually had a community member come in just a few days ago that we sat and talked about with some of them, they had the same questions. It depends on the area, area where you're at. Now, um, back when I filed in the spring, you'll remember, I kind of went in at twenty-four percent with this unknown. It wound up bumping up to about thirty percent just for us. Uh, because it's different across the district. So what you pay maybe in Lang Township compared to St. Clair Township. City of Trenton is a little bit higher, but these townships are not. Madison Township, but we have just a very small portion, less than one percent of our revenue comes from there. They were hit pretty hard. So, um, you should start seeing that on your taxes. I, I did put in another call to Nancy Nix and try to, um, get her to come. I have not heard back from that office yet. I know she's been out in other communities.
I spoke with her a couple of weeks ago. She told me she planned on coming in Sept-, uh, September.
Okay. I have not heard back from her. They did tell me she would probably not make this meeting, so, um, just for her to.
I think she thought that her staff had already committed to you. I, so I, I called her, and she said that they were, let her come to be here in September.
They have not confirmed with me, but.
Be interesting.
Yeah. So we'll start seeing those soon. But it, it really just depends on where you are in this school district, because we're all taxed differently based on where we're at.
Looked like most of them on average was right around thirty percent. And Lang Township was twenty-nine. I think Trenton was just a little bit higher than that. So because we get our tax bill and we pay those in arrears, will we not really know the actual amount?
Until it starts coming, yeah. Till it starts coming in. So what they would collect, anything they collect in this year, you're not gonna see until next year.
Yeah, 'cause we, we got our tax bill last week, and it hadn't changed. But so, but we don't know what it's gonna be out there.
January.
By anywhere. So this goes into effect January first. Is that right? Is that what, or, when does, when?
What I, yes. What I was told from them at our meeting was it's this year that they'll start collecting next year.
And then when, when do we see that money?
We should start seeing some in our August payments.
Any year from now?
Yeah, but they'll start trickling in. It's as people pay, so they'll get their tax bills in January. As they start paying those, then they'll start trickling to us.
That's just fine as time. That's, so we couldn't bring back things that we've probably liked, you know, as far as like the pay-to-play and the.
I think that's gonna take a work session to really pick that apart and say, what, what do you wanna do? It's hard to say right now what that looks like. That's gonna take concentration on the budget, look at what our spending needs as we move forward, and then prioritize.
Cause when I hear input from the community, I feel like the, you know, the best way to get input from the community is by putting it on the ballot and letting the community vote on something, you know? And as far as, you know, for me to sit here and make the decision on whether or not, you know, when that time comes, but to sit there and say like, we're not gonna bring back anything or make it easier. I'm like, if people want three-tier busing or, you know, whatever, then vote yes for the levies. Where we can't have those things, that's a giveaway. We can input to the community on what exactly they want.
Sounds like a work session.
Cause I feel like that's, I mean, we're, you know, we're in this situation because the levy didn't pass. So, you know, I understand it's inconveniences and, and it stinks. It's hard on all of us that we're in this situation. But I feel like, you know, that's kind of, that's, that's your input from the community.
And what property taxes are less in Edgewood than our surrounding districts. I mean, I think people have forgotten, you know, why can't we have twenty kids on the bus instead of sixty? We don't have the finances for that. We don't have a budget to support that. But those are the conversations we need to have and prioritize.
Wasn't that long ago we didn't even know if we were gonna have one of these buses? So we had, I think we, we thought we had to work with, I think we're gonna have a bus for now.
Yeah, my, my daughter has children in Talawanda where high school are not being bused, and her kindergarten is on with middle schools. It's not ideal.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda, IRG agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Looking for a motion for the IRG agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, have a second? Second. Mr. Pressler? Discussion?
So, explain to me what this really is. It looks like it's fifteen thousand dollars to set it up and then ten thousand dollar annual maintenance on this.
So the fifteen dollars would be for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, then every year after is ten thousand dollars. Um, we used to have this and I'm not sure why it fell off, but what they do is they go in and they evaluate. So, for example, we have a tenth with City of Trenton. Um, we also have abatements with Carvana, Couches, Shedcore. Um, they help set up and, um, I can actually send you one if they just did for another district. Do you look at, will you pass that to them? And they help monitor this. And what this does is it makes sure that you are getting the tax dollars that you're entitled to as a district. We, uh, met last week with McDonald's, uh, coming in and just sitting there in that meeting, listening to them. And he said this kinda joking, hey, once we come in here, we hear that the news is gonna follow. This is just to get all of that in line so that we know as people are coming in what these tax rates are for the various districts. So they would help with these abatements and things, help with the filing, uh, invoicing and things like that. And again, it's just to make sure that the district gets the dollars that they're entitled to.
So we know that McDonald's got a tax abatement?
I don't know that they have a tax abatement.
Okay.
Patty and I spoke briefly on this. I mean, she kinda thinks that it is gonna pay for itself. They're gonna find enough that we're not getting, that it should pay for itself. And if, and if it doesn't, we don't, we don't just drop it?
He said we used to have it?
Yeah, we did it for years and then all of a sudden it just got stopped and...
We don't know why it stopped.
So do, is there, is there that much money that's out on the table that we're not getting?
Well, and as she said, I don't know.
We don't know.
I can tell you other districts do it and they feel like it definitely pays for itself, if not more. It's not popular, but it's a way to get additional money.
Is this negotiable at all, this contract with the fifteen thousand dollars to set it up just like that?
That, that is, that is negotiated. That's, that's negotiated.
That's the lowest, the biggest price.
What, what's the difference?
Like fifteen thousand, like she's waving her setup, basically. It would've been fifteen thousand dollars a year and not, she's doing that for us for ten thousand dollars a year.
After the first year?
Do we need to make a decision on this tonight? Is this?
No, we can table it. I, I can actually bring her, she offered to come in and help monitor it and do that.
What other, I'm just curious, what other information? I would like to see if she's willing to do three days. I would like to see that.
I mean, I can ask her to. This is checks and balances between the counties, the city, the school district, just to make sure that all of our funds are flowing in like they're supposed to. Like I said, I feel like it will pay for itself. I, I can certainly reach out to them and ask them to come in if you wanna talk to them.
At what point would you guess?
I'm good with it, but... Yeah, I thi- I think there's a lot of other districts using it already. I don't think it continued as it was actually made for itself.
Cause I think they do a lot, they do a lot with like, they would've dealt with the pipeline stuff and...
Oh, yes.
Everything.
They would all that.
Yeah, to make sure that. And they also, I think they, I, I've been told about this before. They'll go back and they'll reassess to make sure that...
They do.
That they're you're getting the, the maximum amount of tax money that you should be, so.
When we had the refunding of the bonds and things like that, I think that was back in twenty nineteen. They were involved with that. I mean, they've done a lot for this district. Like I said, I'm not sure why this stopped, but I do feel like it would pay for itself.
I, I trust you. I believe you.
Any more discussions? Mrs. Bowers, would you please call a role?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero. Uh, next I would like to block Biden's D, E, F, and G. These are both special needs contracts, with the exception of G, and that is both special education and homeless.
I'm gonna look for a motion to approve D, E, F, and G as presented.
So moved.
Mr. York, do you have a second?
Second.
This is Ashcraft. Discussion? These are pretty much just normal down the line as far as what we've always done.
With the exception of, um, the UTS transportation, um, and I just, I have to mention this year, again, our transportation department has stepped up to the plate. Uh, last year, that UTS contract wound up being over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, special ed and transportation have worked together and now, yeah, they're doing some great things over there and helping out. So we have been able to absorb some of this, uh, and we're not transporting as many students. So what was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars last year, we anticipate about seventy-five thousand this year. That, that's huge again, and that's just kudos to our transportation and special ed department for working, working this out.
So we're probably using our buses?
Yes.
There's more vans and...
More vans, okay. Great. Um, any more discussion? Just that speaking of buses, did we get our one bus back that the owner put in?
Yes, we did.
Handicap bus?
Yes.
Are you using it every day or is it, is it a spare?
No, that's gonna be it every day. The spare will go back to being a spare.
Okay. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a role, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
That motion carries four, five zero. Next I would like a motion to approve a donation from Gabbard Construction.
So moved.
Can I, can I block all of these?
If you want to.
I mean, the... Yes.
Yes.
So let's do yours first.
I'd like to increase that donation.
Yeah. Always a jab. All right, I'm gonna look for a motion for approval of the donation from Gabbard Construction. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, Mr. York?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call a role, please?
Why can't we discuss it? Is it negotiable?
It's not, it's non-negotiable.
It's tough with generalists.
Yeah.
I actually wanna give them one.
We should, we should have two.
I think we should be very grateful for what we're receiving.
Right.
It's more than a spike, it's very nice.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call a role, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Abstain. Now, group resume.
Four zero. So I'll ask for a motion to approve, um, items I, J, and K, which are also donations.
I'm gonna look for a motion to approve I, J, and K as presented. All donations. Mrs. Ashcraft, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a role, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Now, so are these like truly anonymous and you can't, do you think you let her, so or obviously?
Um, for the activity fee, I was specifically asked not to tell, um, the school fees. We actually had a gentleman come into our office and a lady was in there wanting to make a payment on her school fees and didn't have it all, and he said, no, I got it. Um, he, he did not wanna be recognized for that, but he wasn't gonna just let her make that payment and he paid it. And, you know, we've said this for months now, that is one of the great things about being in this community when things like this come out. There, there are still good people out there and...
We're, we're very important.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yep. He gives you all you want. Um, then last thing I have on the informational items, um, and I, I gave you all the paper there. I didn't include in the financial report an official enrollment. Normally we let that roll for a full month. Um, obviously we haven't been in school for a full month, but you can look at that and see where we were, um, at the end of this whole year twenty-three and where we are right now. I do feel like that number, even though it is significantly lower than our student population last year, still may be a little elevated by ten or twelve kids or so. Um, kids that haven't shown up this year and we haven't found yet, they haven't been withdrawn yet. Uh, but because of that, so we can't just withdraw them and let them fall through the cracks. We have to find them. So, um, that's where we are today. That's not an official, uh, but we'll have an official number for next month.
Think you'll have any of the information about why those numbers have fluctuated?
That I do not know. Um, I, I looked at kindergarten in particular. That enrollment was...
Well, we didn't take as many, K wanted to open enrollment, trying to keep the class sizes under twenty-five.
Cause it's like, it's a hundred, right? I remember around a hundred.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers.
Welcome.
Mrs. Spidey?
Yes, I would like to recommend a first reading of Policy seven-five forty-four, Use of Social Media. You have a copy of this. This is a recommended policy and mostly to protect us in regard to, um, public information requests. So with the increase in, of use of social media, we have coaches that are using it for their team members. Hey, remember there's practice, whatever, or, um, you know, any reminders that go out to staff. So we've been using social media accounts for years, but we have not had a policy. And through the increased use, our company is recommending that all schools adopt this. So again, I'm not asking for a motion tonight. It's just to put it in front of you. Read it, read it thoroughly, get with me with any questions, and we will actually have a formal vote next month.
So it, so it looks like there's, like, looking at this, it looks like it's draft, like a lot of opportunity to, to modify or...
Yes.
So are you gonna present us with, with the actual?
No, the actual's on here. If you see an X, that's what we're recommending. If you see an op, there's like, there's two options. One option has an X. That's what we're recommending.
So that's what's, like, I'm seeing end of option in here, what, like at the end of...
That just means that's the end of that option and then you just go into the next paragraph.
So there's nothing after, oh, yeah, I got you. I understand that.
Yeah, and then when we turn it back to them on which option we want, they clean all that up for us. Okay? Any questions on that so far? All right, so we can talk more about that. Next item, uh, you've already approved the preschool calendar, but we were in discussion last year about possibly going to a four-day, uh, student week for preschool. And I know that evidently Edgewood did that in the past. And the staff was just saying that with the accountability that goes in through the, the state evaluation of the program, they need more time. They need time to address IEPs. They need time to, to, to meet with other preschool teachers. So anyway, we didn't do a four-day week because no other grades or programs have that. So that, there was not an appetite for that to even bring up an MOU to the board. But what we said we could do is provide more professional development, more time to prepare for, um, our state evaluation, getting those documents together, educating the staff on what those documents are. So there is a proposal on the calendar revision, to have a revision that we added four to, I wanna say, five professional development days. So, um, the staff was, appreciates that. If that's something the board will support. I could support it because I do know a lot goes into the state evaluation of our preschool. A lot of training is mandated. That's in addition to other grade levels. So that's something our staff would appreciate, but it's not something we have to do. We're, we're just recommending and I certainly support it. So I'm looking for a motion to add additional professional development days to the preschool year, which would mean four to five less student days.
Okay, um... Do you want us to vote on this?
Or you can table it and we can talk about it next time, but Pam, when's the very first professional development day? In October or September?
Um, September twenty...
So it's, but it was, it's, our board meetings before the proposed date.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the revised preschool calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Send that. Mr. Pressler, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
What's, what's the daily schedule look like for preschool? What's, what is that?
I'm gonna let Pam answer that because she's working with the preschool team and preparing them for the state audit and actually pushed and nudged a little bit to revise that.
Yes, we did a little bit this year. Um, just the, the daily schedule's kinda set up. They've got, um, their welcome time when they come in, the students start to work at different centers. Um, then they would like have their snack time, their recess time, their time with their teachers with them. So there's curriculum involved and all that instruction in that classroom. It's about two and a half hours of time with each student. So they come in at the same arrival time as all the other students in the morning. Um, they dismiss after the two and a half hours of time.
What time is that?
That's, um, trying to go by memory here.
Nine or eleven-thirty?
Eleven-thirty.
Or eleven-forty?
No, it's eleven-thirty and then we come back at the, um, twelve-thirty and then they do twelve-thirty.
What time is the second shift start?
Twelve-thirty.
An hour, or just an hour?
Twelve-thirty-five, yes. And so that gives planned time and lunchtime for the staff and then the next group comes in.
Just one.
We pushed on the schedule a little bit. We've worked with them all last year in regard to how much playground time they were at, recess time, um, how they're collaborating with their special teachers. We wanna see more of that. So we do think there's need for some additional training. Um, and, and again, Pam's been put into the almost like a part-time preschool supervisor this year and to work with Mr. Banks and make sure that we're compliant, especially in preparation for a state audit.
So that, when, when do the teachers get planned time?
They get thirty minutes of lunch. They get thirty minute lunch and a thirty minutes right after lunch planned. And that is together, but...
Okay, I'm good.
We just need to let people know because they're gonna find something to do with that. That's why we're talking about it this evening, yes, like in the city.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a role, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
My update items, just want to commend our staff and students for a very smooth start. Other than transportation change, everything else has been amazing. I would've never known day one was day one, um, when it came to the, the efficiency of the school operation. So kudos to all our staff members, classified, certified, and administrators who just did a great job. Now again, with transportation, anytime there's change, there, there's going to be some rumbling. I have to tell you, um, the first day of school, when I picked my granddaughter up and she shared a picture with me of a student that wasn't in a seat, it just alarmed me to no end. Come to find out, there was certainly room on that bus. Um, and the driver did not even know that the students were sitting exactly where they were. So we've been talking to Shane, poor Shane hears from me every day. We have been riding to bus stops and observing areas. We certainly do not want buses to be overcrowded. They have gone from about twenty to thirty to, I was saying, anywhere between fifty-five and sixty-five, which is under the seventy-two. I've even shared with Shane, if we need to expand a little bit, we don't want three Kellys, five East and a seat. We have to make sure the drivers are maybe assigning seats that, and we're finding that some of our students are scooting over. They're so used to having a seat to themselves or no more than two. Many of them will not scoot over and some of the students are too shy to ask. So we're asking the drivers, get up, you may have to assign seats to make this work. But we want it to be safe and comfortable and no one should ever do without a seat. We would correct that immediately, but when that was brought to my attention, that was very alarming. But when that was brought to my attention, that was very alarming, and I was glad to hear we weren't putting people there, but we do need to make sure in this change, that we're being very cognizant of student assigned seats and making sure that, you know, we are working with our, our students on that.
When, when is that decision going to be made, if we decide to assign seats or?
That's up to the bus driver, some bus drivers don't have to, their kids are more cooperative, and so that's on a bus-to-bus need, as of this morning, Shane says there may be two buses, then he may have to go in and say, well, assign, because I need this to be a little bit more cooperative than what I'm seeing.
So, assign, so?
So, I, I did get a complaint from a parent that high school kids were bullying the younger kids, and whether we assign seats or not, I, I do think we need to consider separating by, by, you know, by middle school and, and high school, because if, if the things were going on that I was told by this parent were going on that bus, it's, it's unacceptable, so I, I think that's something that we probably do, if, if we're not going to assign seats, I think we should maybe think about particularly on the middle school, high school bus, that the younger students sit towards the front.
Just so you know, that video was viewed and none of that was seen, but, and sometimes people want to sit with their siblings, so I really think we need to treat that, if there's bullying taking place, that needs to be addressed, and you're right, assigned seats, but I don't think we have to make everybody do that, some may want to sit with a sibling that's a high schooler and not a middle schooler, and that, I'm safer in that situation, you see what I mean? Our, our bus drivers need to supervise their route, they may have to get up out of their seat and make sure that people are situated before they take off, and there may be some, everybody has to sign seats, some get to choose it, you all have to write it down in the chart, that's what you have to do by mandate, but then other buses may actually say, Mark, you're sitting here, and Andrew, you're sitting over here, and actually maneuver the seating, but no one should be allowing bullying, or not, you know, not encouraging kids to be cooperative, that needs to be addressed by the driver, that's a bus driver management issue.
So, y'all watched the video, you guys watched that video, okay?
Our director did.
So, the seating charts are mandated, right, Shane?
Yes.
You got to do that. Would it be defeating the purpose of the seating chart if the kids don't sit in that seat where the chart says they're supposed to be?
Well, you're right, too, we've told them, start of the school year, from middle school to the high school, in fact, and you have siblings that want to sit together, and you also have some discipline issues throughout the year where students are moved up, you know, it's different, it was based on some issues on the bus, so.
Some, some of the purpose of that seating chart, though, is to know where there are supposed to be people in an accident where perhaps the first responder can't see.
Correct.
And if we're not where that chart says they're supposed to be, that's putting the safety of those kids in jeopardy, because the first responder doesn't know where they are.
That's right.
So, just a thought from an old seat.
Some things just seem so simple, huh?
Yeah.
Mr. York?
I would agree with you.
Pull out the old-school assignment.
That makes sense to me.
Yep. Okay, Mark, I know that, does that make sense? So, the year, we did talk about putting the underwinds up around the overwinds, but sometimes that doesn't work perfectly, depending on the scenario.
It, it makes sense, but I, I have, I have heard that complaint from more than one parent, so, yeah, but?
Might want to remind the drivers, we can do that. And, and continue to report, we look into everything, so, if, we think that's, you know, work well, continue to report.
Well, just following up on the buses, from first couple of days of school till now, it's night and day, I think you guys have done a great job getting the buses under control.
We did have a hundred and seventeen students that were on plan for the beginning of the year, and, and that created, you know, certainly a management piece, but I think, considering everything, I'm very pleased, and Mr. Schwartz is always very prompt with me, and sits down and problem solves, and doesn't hesitate to go to a bus stop, look at video.
I think the drivers in the schools as well have done a great job, you know, helping out, get the students laid, get them under the bus and?
As Scott Fussnicker says, Kelly Spieby is hands-on. He harasses me on that just a little bit, so that's how I learn, isn't it, Scott? I'll get out there and figure it out. All right, next piece, legislative update, we already talked about the budget a little bit, so I was going to mention that. Something that continues to really get superintendent attention and cause a superintendent to go to Columbus is that it just seems a little unfair when funding is set up, what appears to be, and, you know, it's not equitable, may it be with how we're funded in the state of Ohio for schools, may it be that now there's even an incentive to get more money, to take your money elsewhere, um, yet we continue to get more mandates with less money, so that's something you'll hear me continue to talk about or put in our weekly update, because it's certainly something that superintendents are networking and getting in public about.
You know what, Mrs. Spigot, it might be interesting for the public and, and us to have a rundown of all the unfunded mandates that you guys are dealing with and the dollars associated with that. Because I think the public needs to know that.
That's a great idea. Yep, I will make that.
I'm talking to someone about special education, and they were, um, I don't know if the word, my family would say they were God, um, interested that there are all kinds of these things that we have to pay for, you know, a child has to be bused out or whatever, it's like, nobody pays for that, and they said, does their parents reimburse you? Absolutely not, or the kids that choose to go out of school to a curricular or a private school, we have to pay their parents to transport them, or else we have to transport them by law, I think people were, I mean?
They can access programs in the public, um, yeah, that's, that's part of the federal law. Okay, last piece, I'm very excited for September seventh, we have about twenty-five community members attending a strategic planning community engagement, we have Dr. Bob Summers coming in, who's retired superintendent, also owner of Line Clay, to work us through some activities to really define what are our goals for, for our district, and so I'm looking forward to that, and then also, we're going to be getting community input on future topics that they would like for us to talk about and investigate, so, and then I'm also working with a student group, with next, this is in September, we'll start my quarterly meetings, I have about four students per grade level I'll be meeting with on a regular basis, just to get their input, we used to do that at Thomas High School, um, might take in a topic, school funding, it could be anything, and it could be about sports, it could be about whatever, and they give you the most authentic feedback of anyone, and I always enjoy it, because I will tell you, and I even told my administrative team this once, sometimes I feel like some people give you the answers they think you want to hear, not the students, they tell you it just the way it is, and it's so refreshing, so, I enjoy that. I'm doing nine through twelve, yeah, 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 so.
That's awesome.
It's great, resume going for college, too, right? So, it's a win-win for all parties. That, well, I'm going to take that back, we're going to go into executive session, I just want to say publicly, when we get back, there are some personnel issues that we will be addressing, but before we go into that, if I may, if I'm not breaking any rules, just want to say that when I came to Edgewood, it was very clear that our pay scales at the bottom, you heard me say this last spring, we need to make cuts, we need to balance our budget, we need to include textbook adoptions, we need to not be at the bottom of the barrel when it comes to salaries in the county, we lost two school psychologists this past year, we couldn't find replacements, it was, matter of fact, we had to go to a contract, outside contract, to get one that's working so many days in-house and so many, um, from home, which is usually not the best idea, but we have to have people. Our psychologists were being paid, were going and leaving for twenty thousand more dollars in bringing up the county, we, we're getting to a place where we can't even keep our personnel. So, going into negotiations, we have to give our staff some increases, we can't be at the bottom, and I'm not even saying the increase there's going to get is going to take us to the middle, but my goal is to get us more towards the middle, so we can be an attractive district and hire the best people for our students in this community. That doesn't mean all of a sudden we have money, that means we have to find ways to make that money, may that be through program cuts, may that be through whatever, but everything we do is about learning, and we have to have staff that make that happen. So, I just want to go on record while everybody's in the room, when we come back, we'll be voting on some personnel items, which does include, um, a change in the salary schedule for classified, certified.
Thank you, Mrs. Spigot. Next, we have items from board members. Mr. York, do you like to start?
Yeah, I'm, I'm passing around Butler Tech's, uh, Student Success Newsletter, and, uh, Kelly Weiser is in, the picture is in there, so make sure you take a look at that along with some students, uh, and the other thing I'd like to, uh, share is that, um, September the twenty-fourth, uh, will be the, uh, annual five K walk run, uh, to honor and raise money for, uh, the scholarship that the Dooley family has established, uh, their son, Brian Dooley, uh, is an Edgewood graduate, uh, and was killed in two thousand and eleven during a pursuit, uh, of a very bad individual.
We're going to see if it's an Edgewood grad.
Yeah, he's, he's an Edgewood grad, and, um, so, if you can go to that, actually, I, you can do it virtually, um, or you can do it in person, so, I may choose the virtual and make the green thing look like I'm running in the background, so, I don't know, but, yeah, you can, you can, uh, we can tap online and register for that, but, uh, Dooley family gives, um, uh, several thousand dollars in scholarships to, uh, the, uh, Safety Academy at, at Butler Tech, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. York, Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yeah, so, um, we went through a transition in the Messerschmidt house this year for six years, we were blessed to have Lori Harrison as our principal, and this is the first time my daughters went to school where Lori wasn't her principal, so, we made the transition to the middle school, and we went and sat in there and watched Curtis do the open house the week before school started, and, uh, I'm very impressed at how well he managed and handled that, the buildings looked phenomenal, they looked, uh, they looked great, uh, got an opportunity to meet all the teachers, and just felt really good coming into school this year, I know my daughter is very excited about being back to school, and, and felt like there was a, a lot of energy there that night, so, really good job, I think, you know, getting back into the swing of things, Kelly, as you mentioned, it really didn't feel like day one, even though it was, so, uh, glad that we've got the kids back in school. I did want to touch a little bit, uh, Miss Beckett talked about this in, in the beginning, I, I got the opportunity with Tom to come to the, uh, the staff meeting that, that you did, Kelly, in, uh, in, in the middle school prior to, uh, to school starting, and, and just so many of our teachers, the commitment to the, you know, this community, so many of them are from here, so many of them have kids here, you even asked the question, how many of their spouses here, and, and that was, significant number of our teachers, you know, have very strong ties to the, uh, to the community, and, uh, I just, I was very impressed at just that meeting and the commitment, and just looking at, as, as we call it up here, the ones that are running the marathon, you know, so many of our teachers at twenty and twenty-five and more years, so just really awesome, uh, start to the school year, so far it's been a safe start to the school year, just really glad that we're back where we, where we are, appreciate all the work that everybody put in the summer, again, as to where we, where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Messerschmidt, Mr. Pressler? Pass?
Pass.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Well, since Mark didn't mention FFA this time, I'm going to.
I stay away from men now.
Yeah, look.
Why can't I all go? No.
Um, I just want to encourage everybody to support the FFA and all of Butler Tech programs, because I think that the kids coming out of there are just phenomenal, um, I know I have two girls that graduated from Edgewood, and they went, you know, FFA for four years, and the way that they compare to the other kids that I see coming out, the way they come on a calendar and a to-do list, you know, I actually leave that to Kelly Weiser, um, and just the things that she does and the dedication that she has in the other Butler Tech teachers is phenomenal, um, they have lots of opportunity for administrators and for, um, board members and parents to assist them, they're looking for people to, um, talk to the kids about their roles, their professions, and things like that, and so, you know, FFA is not just about foreign kids, it's all different types of things, so, um, I would encourage you guys to step down to the FFA room and just check out what she's doing, and, you know, get, be part of the FFA alumni, you don't have to be an FFA member to do that, it's like the history, so, um, obviously, I really care about the FFA program, have been, had for many years, prior to my girls starting, and since they've been gone, my boys, they're disappointed. We heard video, Jake. I'm disappointed. No, I, I have, they, they're freshman year, and then they decided to pursue other things, but now we have one back in junior year, so, hopefully I'll stick with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashcraft. Um, all I want to add is just, uh, get out and support the kids, they're, they're doing a lot of good things, they're, they're getting, uh, we will win some football games, promise you, uh, we will probably, we will make the playoffs, so, um, I know a lot of people's been down on some of that stuff on social media, which I hope, uh, hope that's not your main source of information, so.
You'll be disappointed if so.
Absolutely. Moving on, we're going to move to executive session, uh, for some of the following reasons, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee, or student request a public hearing.
Somebody?
Mrs. Ashcraft, have a second, Mr. Messerschmidt, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five-zero, two-seven-seven, you.
And nine-oh-eight. All right, I'm going to look for a motion for the personnel items as amended.
Still move.
Mr. York, have a second?
In that, personnel item as amended, are we?
Let's discuss the amendments.
We are tabling administration raises. Until we get more information. Let's get a, so, let's get a second, then we can talk. Mr. York, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, discussion. We're, we're going to table two percent raise for the administration until we get more information.
So, yeah, the, see, under personnel, you've got administrative, and then you've got the proposed salary, there are different, right, so you get, one is supplementals, and one is salary increase under nine, you got item A and item B, are we, are we putting this both together?
Item A is?
Oh, yes, that's the amended, that's the supplemental, the new one.
So, that's A, that's A. And then B is what's, is?
So, B is what's going to be amended, yes.
Yes, yes, I was, I was lumping them together, I was running them the same, we were just going to amend B.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes, staying. Yeah, I want to separate, I, I want to vote on these separate, one, line A, if that's?
Okay, so we're voting on this first?
We're mo, we're, we're voting on it as amended.
Okay, you want them to say?
He's second, you first, run it, run it, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
What are we, is this nine-A?
This A.
Upstaying.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Upstaying.
Question carries three-zero. Now, we're going to do this. This is the ads and how's it under?
Okay, I'm going to look for? Okay, I'm gonna look for a motion for the administrative contracts as amended. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, go have a second. Mr. York, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Can we have some discussion around?
Yes.
All right, so what we're, what we're voting on here is a two percent raise to the ETA and all the hours, right? So.
Classified certified.
Classified and cert, and exempt.
Yes.
So I want to talk about this because this will likely be on Trenton Talk before we get home. So we had a levy that failed and now we're voting a two percent pay raise. And as somebody who is elected to represent the community, I feel like I have to be able to justify my vote. And I want to talk about that right now publicly because I've got information for all the districts in the county and we've talked about it on stage multiple times that we are in the bottom half or the bottom third for a good majority of our teachers. I'm also somebody who watches the news and I just saw that we've got districts all over the country probably as close to us as Louisville where we don't have bus drivers to get kids to and from school because they can't find them. I know that there's a projected teacher shortage in the very near future. And if we don't recruit and retain good teachers, we're gonna, we're gonna be in trouble. So I look at this, and I mentioned earlier, I was at your meeting, Kelly, on the day before school started and had everybody in there and roughly forty percent of our district is either lives here, kids here, from here, met their spouse here. So we have the teachers that we have because we have a lot of loyalty to the district, a lot of loyalty to the, to the community. But you can't feed your family with loyalty, right? So if we don't start offering competitive wages to what schools around us, similar to us, are paying, we're not gonna be able to teach, or to retain those teachers. So I felt like, because I think this is, this is gonna, this is gonna cause a lot of people in the community to look at it and say, how are we voting to give teachers a pay raise when we just had a levy fail? But the reality of it is, this is absolutely the right thing to do for the longevity of our school and to, and to keep the teachers that we have and to continue to be able to recruit good teachers into the district. We talked about it, we had jobs that went up and there were zero people that applied for them. We had teachers that left the district and went to other districts. We had administrators that left the district and went to other districts. If we don't start paying our people what they're, what they're worth and a competitive wage, it's gonna be very difficult to keep them. So I wanted to get that off my chest before we voted on this because I think that's important to discuss.
May I also add that we made one point eight million dollar cuts in order to add some things. You heard me on the stage last spring saying we have to have curriculum adoption, we need to pay our teachers more. We need to get some things in balance. So we made cuts to try to make this happen as well.
Right. So I just, I wanted to get that off my chest. I know folks at home are watching and probably are gonna be confused about some of the decisions that were made up here tonight. But I want, from my perspective, if I'm asked specifically why we did what we did, I feel pretty comfortable giving that answer because I think, I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
And I, I'll add to that, Mark, the number of teachers that are, that, around the nation is three hundred and ten thousand is the shortage. SISI Public had eighty classrooms who had teachers in them starting this fall. So if we could give our teachers ten percent raises, it wouldn't be enough. We can't do that, but that's not the financial picture that we have. So, yeah, I, I don't, I think that the two percent that these guys are getting in a raise is the easiest thing that we've done tonight to defend, paying them two percent more, so.
And just so you know, I asked our attorney how this is in comparison across the state and she said many districts got four and five percent. So this was at the lower percentage increase. So want to throw that out there too. We have to build a system that people want to be at, stay at, and we offer competitive education. This is part of it.
I agree. Actually, Columbus City, Columbus, their, their teachers threatened strike over a four percent raise. So I think, I think what we're doing is the right thing and at the times, it's all we can afford. So I think we need, I think we need to do it.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Magerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Abstaining.
Question carries four zero.
This time, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, have a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
We want to have a good evening.